I can help with that. It's not because they're here, right? Do it online. They're not going to get this.
Nothing.
And that's the big deal. Well, of course, this is. She's the best. I think that's.
The border goes along.
Good evening, everyone. This meeting was called for Monday, April 22nd, 2024, at 7:30 PM at Borough Hall located at 77 Summer Hill Road, Spotswood, New Jersey. Pursuant to the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10-4-8B, the public may choose to attend this meeting electronically via Google Meet. This meeting was advertised on the Spotswood website and in the home news tribune.
Councilman Kramer.
Here.
Councilwoman Lasco.
Here.
Councilwoman Schwartz.
Here.
Councilman Zaborni.
Here.
Council President Legakis.
Here.
And Mayor Palmeris Patterson.
Okay, we'll begin tonight with our engineer report.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone. On behalf of the Borough Engineer, I submit tonight's report. For the item number one, 2023 capital improvements of Janus Drive Neighborhood, the Hutter Road Neighborhood, American Way, and various capital improvements. The contractor will be returning to the borough the week of April 22nd, this week, to continue the project. For item number two, there is no update. And for item number three, the 2023 NJDOT road improvements of West End, Metall, and Walker. The bits were opened up for project on April 4th, and we have recommended award to Lancha Construction Corp.
Thank you. Any other council members have any questions? Thanks, Helen. Okay, we have three ordinances on first reading tonight. Janet?
And the public hearing is set for May 20th at our next meeting. Ordinance 2024-3, in ordinance amending and supplementing the salary ordinance of the borough of Spotswood, entitled "An Amendment to an Ordinance Fixing and Establishing the Salaries and Wages of Certain Non-Harvesting Unit Employees of the Borough of Spotswood, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey." Ordinance 2024-4, in ordinance amending and supplementing Part II, General Legislation/Land Development, Chapter 120, Land Development, Article 500, Stormwater Control, Repairing Zones and Steep Slopes, to incorporate rules preventing stored salt and other solid waste materials from being exposed to stormwater in the borough of Spotswood, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey. Ordinance 2024-5, in ordinance amending and supplementing Part II General Legislation/Land Development, Chapter 120, Land Development, Article 500, Stormwater Control, where, excuse me, I now like people. Repairing Zones and Steep Slopes to incorporate rules to address tree removal and replacement. We also have resolutions under consent agenda. Resolution 2024-58, resolution authorizing emergency temporary appropriation in the amount of $31,500. 2024-59, resolution authorizing utility credit for property known as 250 Main Street. 2024-60, resolution authorizing utility credit for property known as 48 Louis Court. 2024-61, resolution authorizing utility credit for property known as 133 Wyoming Avenue. 2024-62, resolution authorizing utility credit for property known as 38 Dora F. 2024-63, resolution authorizing the circulation of a preliminary official statement and final official statement in connection with the sale of certain of the borough's bonds anticipation notes and special emergency notes, and approving a continuing disclosure certificate with respect to said notes of the borough, and authorizing and/or ratifying other actions in connection therewithin. 2024-64, resolution awarding an emergency contract/purchase order to C&amp;W Construction Co. of New Jersey, Inc. for emergency water main repairs. 2024-65, resolution authorizing Hunter Technologies to install a new telecommunications system. 2024-66, resolution authorizing the renewal of the inter-local service agreement with the County of Middlesex for the purpose of the borough obtaining public health services from the County of Middlesex for the years January 1st, 2024 through December 31st, 2025. 2024-67, introduction of the 2024 municipal budget. 2024-68, resolution to accept a bid awarding contract to work on a project known as Blood Squad Drive, Walker F., and West End at 2023 NJDOT. 2024-69, resolution appointing Tanika Johns as tax and utility collector. 2024-70, resolution authorizing acceptance and utilization of the Community Development Gloss Grant, CZBG funds, in the amount of $45,867 for program year 2024. 2024-71, resolution authorizing the execution of a contract with East Brunswick Animal Hospital. 2024-72, resolution authorizing the appointment of Kim Karashevitz as Acting Chief Financial Officer, and 2024-73, payment of bills.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to open to the public.
Second.
Call in favor.
Aye.
The public comment portion of the Spotswood Borough Council meeting is to allow public to bring council's attention to their concerns for comments in accordance with NJSA 10-4-12A, as well as Spotswood Borough ordinances 2-18 and 2-19. Except upon consent of the council president, each person addressing the council, in the case of a resolution, shall limit their remarks to three minutes, and in the case of an ordinance, shall limit their remarks to five minutes total for the meeting. No person shall direct any remark or question to any specific council member except by permission of the council president. Any council member through the council president may choose to answer a question, but they are not obligated to do so. All persons wishing to address the council shall do so from the podium or other location specified by the council president. Each person addressing the council must identify themselves by name and address. If said person is representing a business or organization, they shall further state whether their comments are their personal view or those of the group they represent.
Diane Farlow, 29, Old Stage Road. I have a question on ordinance number three. On the back, where it says Senior Services. What is near him is titled? Part-time program coordinator. Okay. There is no, um... No item for part-time program coordinator under the salary ordinance.
I was informed that she functions under the director portion, because that also came up under recreation, because there's a program coordinator under recreation that function under the.
She doesn't have qualifications to be a director, does she?
I would have to review her files. He was hired prior to being.
Okay. Great. What sort of person? So if she's the director, then her salary range is 40 to 75 thousand. She leaves at 2:00 in the afternoon. She's here from 9:00 to 2:00. She's a part-time person.
That's what I understand the position to be, but I can't, I can't align on something that happened prior to being.
Okay. Is that something that you would look into?
Sure, if I can, I can. I know, I was going towards asking those questions earlier.
It's the discussed. We're not done discussing it yet. Okay. Um, it just seems that, and... I'm there every Thursday, okay? A lot of times she doesn't stay until 2:00. Just saying. Okay, I'm the bill. I see, I saw two charges for East Brunswick Water. How long are we going to be continuing to keep these projects for water?
It depends on when the DPD issues us the permit. So we have not been given the permit, the function of the well that we've split.
Okay, and we have no idea when that will come through. Here's one to fire under.
If you figure out how to light a fire with the DPD.
Hi. Fire.
You figure that out.
I'll be glad to share.
Um, and then specifically to those two payments, there was, as I stated before, we have corrected it in the system.
Okay.
I remember the last meeting I explained that there was listed as two January bills.
Right.
We were able to locate, one bill was from November, because that's, uh, the bill came in right as I went on paternity leave. Fixed that, and then these two bills are.
One says January, the other one says March.
That is the true January bill.
Okay.
It was the one that was listed, the double Januaries at the last meeting. One was a November, and one was a February.
Oh, okay, all right.
So we are now caught up all the way to March.
Okay, all right. Um... Government Strategy Group, who are they?
They're the individuals that the public eloquently pointed out that were suing us. Um, and the lawyers were able to come up with a settlement figure to then drop their lawsuit.
Government Strategy Group was suing the town, the borough?
They were the ones that were handling CFO services. CFO of, um, temporary CFO services beginning with 2023 to around the time when I was hired, in between Ryan and Brad.
Okay, but I, when did Natasha come on board? That's.
So she was in May.
So why would you have to have somebody go from whenever to when you came on board?
So the way it was explained to me was that we needed, there was no bankrupt conciliations for 2020, for the prior 2022, so we water can't provide bankrupt conciliations. They had to hold up bankrupt conciliations to give a company to go through those items for the prior year. And then also, um, since you had no licensed CFO from the beginning to the present meeting, so.
And that's what they did. Okay. Um, also, I see some, some bills for Attorney Flynn for $22,953.50. Is that over the 17.5 mark? Or is that not applicable yet?
Um, I mean, as we found out, uh, through the court orders, not applicable at all.
Why? Why isn't it applicable at all?
Because there needs to be an appointment of an attorney. Town cannot be without an attorney, and until a subsequent attorney is appointed to replace, um, Solicitor Flynn, Solicitor Flynn has to serve in that capacity. You can't have a town without an attorney.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Chuck Hager, 65, Herman Brian. I have two questions. Um, the first is on the salary ordinance. I realize it's only on my first reading today. Last time I made it to second reading, and it seemed so different above the dot. So on the salary ordinance, the salary is, uh, these chief is listed at a mass of $215,000. I did some checking, the superintendent of the state police, for instance, his salary is $190,000. I know that already. Is at, um, 208. I just wanted you to think about what we're doing with that particular salary. I mean, family and friends say he's a great guy, but same token, it seems a bit outlawed. Um, question number two. Was Resolution 2024-67, the introduction of the budget? I didn't see online, or at least I wasn't able to find the actual budget. I only found Resolution. Is, is the budget available somewhere?
There are copies in the quarter.
So specifically, the budget is a work product document until the council introduces it. Um, so since there's an intention to introduce today, you produce copies, but you can't publish it on the website until it's actually official. So the way the law works is that the mayor's office must create a budget. It's a work product document until council makes the document official.
So one thing, one thing, and you can go over to the table and get a copy out. If I get off, if I get off the podium, get over there, we pull the copy out.
So if the mayor is still listed as a work product. It's still listed as a work product document. If council does not pass it this evening, it's still a piece of work product document.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Rich O'Brien, 11 Hudson Avenue. I had two questions tonight. Uh, the first one relates to 2024-72, the resolution appointing a new acting CFO. That'll be our seventh CFO in 38 months, and it's an injury to the booth. Um, is there an intention to hire and retain a licensed CMFO at some point?
So, um, I believe the conversation that, uh, we had with, with earlier, uh, with regards to the CFO is, um, when the last CFO resigned, there were two candidates, I believe.
Uh, there was the one candidate accepted, and that's when, um, the prior CFO attended her resignation. Um, because there was always an intent to have someone working in the bill. An awful disappointment was given to someone to work two days in the bill. And one day for hope. So, uh, that all was out, we then sent them an offer to a tax collector. As you know, we were trying to merge the two positions together to get someone to be a full-time. The individual then informed us that they were able to get a full-time job instead of working for two different towns. At that point, we did go and exhaust the rest of the people who put in. Um, there was only one person left. That person did not get back to us, so we were left at the role of either trying to get the owners to come back or to move forward and re-advertising to, to get another person. So right now, since the finance manager is on the payroll, she will function as an acting, um, under the statute for a one-year appointment unless once a senior. And, and then your full.
Thank you. So I did some quick research within the county, just going back three years. I'm still looking at it. We're going to set a record for having the most CFOs in this four-year period. So I bring that to the council's attention. 2024-67, the working product budget. Will any details about what goes into the levy for this upcoming budget we presented tonight? Or will all of that happen at the May 20th meeting? Uh, so, no, we will not, uh, be presenting anything this evening. Um, I believe is, so I, I would assume that the mayor is going to, uh, present the budget at, at our next meeting.
I think she said, and email the council, so she, her best.
So will that provide the council enough time for a thorough examination of the budget? Because that would be the second reading at the public hearing, right? Can I have time to do your homework? Unless, yes, unless we, unless we call for a special, special meeting. Um, but we would have to check the mayor's schedule to see if she can present. So it should be, the mayor will be here on the 20th to present this budget. That's all we talked. Okay. Thank you for speaking. I appreciate it.
Should probably be noted for the record that I think the department did meet with the local office. Um, and since the council has that budget, uh, within two weeks of the meeting, so.
Tom Rockford, Malphard. Um, Resolution 2024-71, which is the resolution for East Brunswick Animal Hospital, TNR. Um, it says here that the resolution, female cat's going to be $150 procedure, male cat's going to be $100 procedure. Additional veterinary care for each animal shall be capped at $100 per procedure. No monthly invoice issued to the borough. They exceed $25,000 unless it's just unauthorized, blah, blah, blah. Um, at the time that these animals are being TNR, does that, does anybody look to see what that $150 includes? Is that just the TNR? Or is that including for each's temper, microchip, and feeding the test?
That was all.
It's all, does it say that somewhere? Because I'm telling you what's going to happen is we're going to get there, and they're going to say it's $150 new to cat, and all these other things are going to be additional.
Now, the, the other items that was on there is that if our current hospital that we use to have injured animals, if that comes over the run, that we could then still use this hospital. Else, $100 for names.
Okay, what does all-inclusive mean? Does that mean just to say and neuter the animal?
I can pull the, the, uh, the email that they sent the.
Um, on the bills list, can you tell me what? Uh, 2400445, Garden State Veterinary Services, 9185. Could you tell me what that's for?
I believe that was brought in by the police department, uh, this scare of dogs.
By email, would you get, would you send me a copy of the resolution, if you want to recede any?
Yes, I have. Basically, once it's done, it goes to them, but it was a quoted price of $8.
Okay, that's what I wanted. I understand. I understand what you're saying, but I want to know exactly what's including in that $150 and that $100. So by emailing it, would you send me that information? Okay, thank you very much.
Martha Faulkner, 467 Adirondack Avenue. Um, on the salary ordinance, um, the recreation director, which was from $3,000 to $7,000, is getting changed from $3,000 to $25,000? Why?
Would you, uh, note that we went back and forth with regards to the information that Dulce provided? I found it a little, um, hard to understand, so, uh, if you could explain it a little bit more in, more detail.
I, I remember, and she submitted her budget was that, uh, there was an arrangement that was agreed to prior to the beginning of the year. I did offer the appointment, but I did not, uh, state that it's the hourly rate. That was it. Um, and obviously, you need cap at the salary ordinance. Um, there was a different conversation from what I was told with the mayor. Um, and based off of what was explained to employee is that it was up to 25 hours a week. Um, they did manage to be a little bit over that at the end of the year when we were doing the audit review. So it was around $8,000 altogether at the end of last year, and then addressing it with the department head review, um, for the budget that if it's going to go forward the way it was originally intended, then the cap, as I said, it would be $24,700. So I would have to increase now. If that does not pass tonight, then the, the interns, the employee.
I would highly recommend to change the terms of employing them. I'm sorry. I thought you were done.
We're talking about a position. We're not talking about the performance of the employee right now. We're talking about a position. You're not going to give them to, uh, we're hearing what the resident's about to say. You can't agree to any of that, make an action, that action is taken, and then they react to that. So what, you're not talking about everyone's performance. We're talking about a position and what the salary level is.
And then we'll stick to that. We have a Director of Community Affairs, and now we also have a Recreation Director. One with a salary, uh, ordinance for a salary range that goes up to $40,000. This one up to $25,000, both part-timers. What are they doing? They are helping volunteer groups. This, this makes no sense to me whatsoever, regardless of how the job was structured. Whether or not the person is doing a good enough job, that's not the issue. The issue is, what is the job that requires that much money? I highly recommend you hold on this one. Thank you.
Make a motion to close the public portion.
Secondly.
Call in favor.
Aye. Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Call in favor.
Aye.
This meeting was called for Monday, April 22nd, 2024, at 7:30 PM at Borough Hall located at 77 Summer Hill Road, Spotswood, New Jersey. Pursuant to the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10-4-8B, the public may choose to attend this meeting electronically via Google Meet. This meeting was advertised on the Spotswood website and in the home news tribune.
Councilman Kramer.
Here.
Councilwoman Lasco.
Here.
Councilwoman Schwartz.
Here.
Councilman Zaborni.
Here.
Council President Legakis.
Here.
As everybody, please, rise and sit with the podium. Okay, we have three ordinances on first reading. Public hearing set for May 20th, 2024.
I'll take a motion to, um, to accept ordinance 2024-3 on first reading.
I'll make a motion to adopt or to accept ordinance 2024-3 instead of public hearing for May 20th.
Second.
Councilman Kramer.
Yes.
Councilwoman Lasco.
Yes.
Councilwoman Schwartz.
Yes.
Councilman Zaborni.
Yes.
And Council President Legakis.
Yes.
I'll take a motion to accept ordinance 2024-4 on first reading. Public hearing set for Monday, May 20th.
I'll make a motion to accept ordinance 2024-4 with public hearing set for May 20th. First reading.
Second.
Councilman Kramer.
Yes.
Councilwoman Lasco.
Yes.
Councilwoman Schwartz.
Yes.
Councilman Zaborni.
Yes.
And Council President Legakis.
Yes.
I'll take a motion to accept ordinance 2024-5 on first reading. Public hearing set for Monday, May 20th.
I'll make a motion to accept ordinance 2024-5 for first reading with public hearing set for May 20th.
Second.
Councilman Kramer.
Yes.
Councilwoman Lasco.
Yes.
Councilwoman Schwartz.
Yes.
Councilman Zaborni.
Yes.
And Council President Legakis.
Yes.
Council President, council members, I will take a motion to accept a resolution. Council President, council members, I will take a motion to accept a resolution twenty twenty-four dash fifty-eight through twenty twenty-four dash seventy-three.
Make a motion to adopt, uh, resolution twenty twenty-four dash fifty-eight through seventy-three.
Second.
Councilman Kramer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lesko?
Yes.
Councilwoman Schwartz?
Um, yes, but I need to abstain from items on the bill list. So I need to abstain from twenty-four dash zero zero four one one and twenty-four dash zero zero four two five.
And, uh, Councilwoman Zaborni?
Uh, yes.
And Council President Legakis?
Yes.
Right, at this time, we have two proclamations to read. Uh, our first one is a proclamation on World Autism Awareness Day, uh, as Councilman Zaborni.
Whereas autism spectrum disorder, autism is a complex neurological developmental disability that typically appears during early childhood and affects a person's social skills, communication, and self-regulations. And whereas there is no known single cause of autism and affects all racial and socioeconomic groups. The symptoms and characteristics of autism vary and may present themselves differently in all individuals. And whereas autism is an urgent public health crisis that demands support from its community and all levels of government. And whereas autism affects an individual's ability to learn, create, maintain relationships, develop healthy interactive behaviors, and interpret and understand verbal and nonverbal communications. And whereas the borough of Spotswood is committed to providing a safe, nurturing, and welcoming community to all citizens, including individuals living with autism spectrum disorder, and that they are provided access to lifelong care and services needed to help them pursue their full potential. Now, therefore, the Spotswood Borough Council, along with Mayor Palmer, do hereby proclaim April third, two thousand twenty-four as World Autism Awareness Day, and urge all citizens of Spotswood to observe the day in ways appropriate to its importance and significance.
Thank you, Councilwoman Zaborni. Councilwoman Schwartz, proclamation on, uh, CDH?
Yes. Okay, so I was honored to be contacted by former councilwoman Marilyn Israel. She asked me to share Asher's story. Um, so I'm going to share just a little bit with you, but there are copies of his story on the table, so I encourage you to take one and leave the whole thing. Um, I'm gonna try this, you ready? Asher's story, fetoscopic endoluminal tracheal occlusion for congenital diaphragmatic hernia. How do I do? Okay. So, um, Jennifer and Gonzalo are Asher's parents, and they were notified when they had their ultrasound that the fetus had a birth defect known as congenital diaphragmatic hernia, or CDH. Um, Jennifer was overwhelmed by the news, but she took note when the physician said that CHOP was the best place to go for CDH. This couple was sent directly to a nearby medical center, and it was confirmed that CDH was the place to be. Asher is nothing short of a miracle. He is now four years old and has had, um, diaphragmatic hernia repaired while he was at CHOP's, um, C, N I, N I I C U. He has avoided many of the therapies often needed for the severest CDH, including extra corporal membrane oxygenation, how do I do? Okay, these are some crazy words. Or ECMO, and long-term use of pulmonary vasodilators. He breathes room air on his own without the use of an extra respiratory support. Although he has had some challenges with eating, he continues to make progress. He has transitioned from a gastroomy, a G, a GJ tube, thank you, a feeding tube in his stomach and small intestine to just the G tube. He receives thirty minutes of bolus tube feedings for every four hours and eight hours of continuous tube feeds over eight. He continues to work with feeding and speech therapists and has come quite a long way. There was a time where he wouldn't accept any food by mouth and would only drink through a syringe. He now eats fruits, pudding, french fries, pizza, and ice cream by mouth, and can drink through a sippy cup. Looking back a year ago, this is a lot that he has accepted to eat, says his mom Jennifer. He has recently started school and is under the superstitious vision of a full-time day nurse. We continue to be so proud, says his mom. And the family has held a fundraising rock wall for Asher in their town and here in Spotswood with the help from CHOP, and has met the fundraising goal of five thousand dollars over the years. Asher is nothing short of a miracle, says his father Gonzalo, and it still brings tears to his eyes every time he thinks about the entire ordeal and may consider himself blessed. So, whereas CDH is a birth defect that occurs during fetal development, causing a hole in an infant's diaphragm, allowing organs to migrate through the hole and crowding the abdomen, and ultimately may cause the infant's lungs to be small and underdeveloped. And whereas one in every two thousand five hundred pregnancies are diagnosed with CDH. And whereas since two thousand, it is estimated that over seven hundred thousand babies have been born with CDH with a survival rate of only fifty percent. And whereas CDH is a com, is as common as spina bifida and cystic fibrosis, however, very few people know about it or are aware of it. And whereas one thousand six hundred babies are born with CDH every year in the US, and those with CDH often endure multiple surgeries and possible medical complications beyond their diagnosis, which includes heart defects, pulmonary complications, gastric and intestinal problems, developmental delays, and may require respiratory and medicinal support for years. And whereas raising awareness of this congenital defect will help bring about acceptance and support for those suffering with it, and will help advocate for urgency, urgently needed medical research and advances. And whereas the congenital diaphragmatic hernia awareness ribbon is a unique, is as unique as the babies born with CDH. The awareness colors are pink and blue, so they were incorporated into the CDH ribbon. The official CDH awareness ribbon is pink, baby blue, and light yellow to represent the babies who are still fighting in the NICU, with white clouds to represent the fifty percent of babies born with CDH who did not survive. And whereas there are many families living in New Jersey with babies who have been diagnosed and survived from CDH, including that of our own former councilwoman Marilyn Israel and her daughter Jennifer Garcia, whose grandson and son Asher was born with this birth defect. Though many families have endured the horrible pain and grief associated with the loss of loved ones to this condition. Now, therefore, I, Jackie Comer, Mayor of Borough Spotswood, together with our governing body, do hereby proclaim April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four to be congenital diaphragmatic hernia awareness day, and encourage all residents to join in this observance by wearing blue, pink, yellow, or white. I further proclaim that Friday, April twenty-sixth, be designated as Asher Garcia Day in the borough of Spotswood to celebrate this little warrior. He will be five years old on July fifth, and he is currently attending Shoney School and thriving.
Thank you, Marilyn, for bringing that to our attention, and God bless it. Uh, at this time, I'd like to ask any of the, uh, council members if they have any comments. Can you do great?
No.
Okay, really quick, um, the library is excited to welcome our new director, Ms. Carrie Gilbert, who will begin her journey with the Spotswood, who began her journey with the Spotswood Library on April fifteenth. Um, as the library will be installing a new circulation desk and doing electrical work, they will be closed next Monday, April twenty-ninth through Saturday, May fourth. They will reopen on Monday, May sixth, at ten AM, so if you need any reading materials, please pop in and get them this week. Um, the recreation department has quite, um, a bunch of things going on. Uh, the townwide spring yard sale will be happening this weekend from eight AM to five PM. I've seen maps and addresses floating around online on Facebook for that, so check it out. The fishing derby is set for Saturday, June first, with some snacks and awards for those great fish catches. Uh, the car show is set for Saturday, June fifteenth, with a DJ and a food truck, so be sure to stop in and see that. Um, flag football registration is complete, and we have a hundred and twenty children participating. So thank you to Jim Purnell for handling this event. And summer camp registration, which is arts and crafts and tennis, has begun. Please register soon, for those spots will fill up quickly. And thank you to the Office on Aging for including me in their outing to Cracker Barrel. Um, I was so excited to actually be off from school and able to have lunch with everyone, including our beloved bus driver, Larry Hollander. So I would like to wish him all of the best in his retirement, um, and I know he will be very hard to replace.
Thank you. Councilman Kramer?
Well, as you can see, the, uh, engineering department doesn't have a whole lot to talk about, and they've already stated what they have to talk about. Uh, so I haven't really met with them about that. I spoke to, uh, Doug a couple of times. Um, he seems to have all of his, uh, requests in, uh, to the mayor, so we'll find out how that goes. As soon as I know, I let everybody else know.
Thank you. Councilwoman Lesko?
Hi, everybody. Pardon my absence at the last meeting, I returned from travel, was not feeling too well. Ran back here tonight, I did watch the whole meeting online, so I was, uh, watching from home with the other people. Uh, we have a parade at the end of next month, uh, DPW should be putting up American flags, beautifying the town and the parade route a little bit, the fountains are on. And we're gonna have a good summer here in town, and hopefully it'll look nice, uh, for long. Other than that, um, happy spring.
Thank you. Councilwoman Zaborni?
So, uh, the other night, I got the Spotswood Board of Education meeting, uh, this past Tuesday, and they wanted to, uh, send a special thank you to the Friends of Spotswood Rec, uh, Recreation for a grant. So it's from the Friends of Spotswood Rec Grant for two eighth graders are receiving fifty dollars, uh, later to be announced. I want to send a special, uh, congratulations to Glenn Fredericks, three hundred. Uh, yeah, three hundredth win was this past, uh, week, so congratulations to, uh, really all the teams, though there are great spring sports happening, uh, amongst our schools. And don't forget the Culture and Heritage Club, there's no meeting this month, but they will host May twenty-third, seven PM, at the VFW on Daniel Road. And as I always say, check out the shop at St. Peter's right here in our town for some great charity offerings. And, uh, yes, happy spring and private service.
Thank you, Councilwoman Zaborni. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to open the public portion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This time, you can come up and ask any question or make any comments.
Nancy Fredelik, thirty-four Cologne Street. Uh, this is regarding the TNR. I'd like to thank Branger and all the council members who voted to have the TNR program initiated again at this crucial time when kitten season has begun. I did the hard part, which is now having a local veterinary sponsored animal hospital to do our spay and neuter, so residents have the convenience of driving distance. Now we need residents to be part of the solution to this problem with the cat community by participating and being colony caretakers. If you see them, fix them. The easy part is feeling, but you're only doing half of the job by not getting them fixed. Being a colony caretaker, you already have to catch your feeding, so why not take the extra step and have it fixed so we could stop this continuous cycle of more cats in our town? I need people to start getting involved with this issue instead of just agreeing with my post. When the town puts the post for caretakers, I'd like to see more residents take the extra step to be involved, and if need to learn how to trap, we could have a class for that. Uh, can I know when the caretakers are gonna be posted?
So once we get the contract, uh, signed, then we have all the documents, we're gonna go on to the website, um.
Okay, what was that, we're talking about actually?
Yeah, I mean, at the one point that, uh, wrong, I think they can incorporate that into the contract.
Right.
It was quoted a rabies shot.
Yeah, I remember. Yeah, rabies and, yeah.
Two other things, but, uh, we'll make sure that it's in the contract, so it's clearly still.
Okay, so we're talking on May?
No, I mean, my hope is, my hope is now that the council has totally got the contract, all I have to do is get it over to the hospital, they can prove it once.
And would I be able to meet with you to discuss some things? Okay, okay, uh, so once again, thank you for approving the program, and now let's make it happen with Spotswood. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to do a quick drive, um, couple things. One, thank Jen for giving rabies shots. Two questions for the VA, uh, you know, mine's, I heard you talking about East Brunswick and more waiting for permits for our wells. What about Daniel Road?
That's the Daniel Road well. So we've, we have put out, uh, so we've redone the entire treatment facility. Um, there was a request from, uh, Rellington Verge to put in a new, to drill a new well. Um, we didn't do that, but in order to start up the well, you need to have a permit by the DEP.
Okay, and the old well that was there, we can't go, we can't use that, the older?
Um, it is past a two, well, probably a year or two, it's useful, uh, life being ended, so that's the reason why we went forward with the well. That was already an ordinance in place prior to me getting here, um, where I believe they put five hundred thousand dollars together to cover it. Um, but they've never started one. So that was all done next year.
Currently with the project, they're rebuilding, but they couldn't even start working on getting the permits for the new wall they do Daniel Road.
I can't answer that question, um, what I can say, and I've said it at a prior meeting, is that, um, the, I don't know what we refer to Rockefeller's, White's, or whatever it is, they were giving us their water allocation. Um, somehow the DEP merged both files. So the approval of the water allocation coming to Spotswood end the well, we're all merged together. We have been trying with our engineers to bifurcate the, the two allocations. I don't know how they were put together because they're being handled by two different people. One's being handled by a private company that, uh, Rockefeller is, is using to, to cede over the, uh, the allocation to us, and then we're using Rellington Verge. Somehow DEP merged the two files together. Uh, and that's the reason why I'm being told that we're, we're kind of like in this long game of approvals, because once we get the water allocations, if we're gonna use it, we can't pull it from Daniel Road. We have to, then, basically, we're gonna have to start a whole new treatment facility in a well, um, somewhere in town, if we're gonna use.
So Daniel Road won't be utilized anymore?
No, no, Daniel Road would be, um, and as I stated in another, my statement in prior meetings, in order to pull enough water to, to serve a Spotswood in the summer, you're still gonna be pulling some from East Brunswick. So once you get that other well, and all of them.
Okay, we're, we're paying a premium for East Brunswick water, especially in the summertime.
My hope is to try and get us all as soon as possible, it's been a long process. We should have been all, uh, East Brunswick by the start of this year, but the permitting issue is, is the biggest problem. If you drive by Daniel Road, you'll see the wells in. Um, everything's ready to go, we just need the permit.
Hey, boy. All right, thank you. Um, the other thing I want to talk about is charter study. We have to, if we're gonna do anything, to get a question on the ballot for people in town that vote for charter study commission. What's our last time, I'm, you get a ballot question of August?
Uh, August, beginning of August.
So it requires an ordinance, we have an ordinance prepared for May, second reading is June. We're getting close to timeframe to do this. I would strongly recommend that the council come to an agreement and put an ordinance together for this.
So, Councilman Lesko has done some research, I'm sorry, I did some research some months ago. When I did the research some months ago, council could either unprompted fill out a, create an ordinance to, to, uh, have this body be created, where the residents can get twenty-five percent of registered voters to sign a petition.
Seven percent.
Ten, twenty-five, somewhere in the middle, maybe.
If the guy goes 10% less, general.
Okay, I wrote 25, sorry about that.
I'm reading, okay, and I, there's more, we're something.
Okay. Um, and then I, I think the next step would be on the residents to, five of you have to run for election to do this study. So once it's out of council's hands, it's in the hand of the residents.
But the council should create the ordinance authorizing the charter permission study. Whether only five people run for that or 25 people run for that is irrelevant. The top five people would be the ones appointed to it. So if 10 of us run, the top five votes would be counted for the charter study commission. But again, in order to get on the ballot for November, we need to start moving this thing because August is gonna come faster than we realize. And all of a sudden, now you're stuck, you're waiting another two years to look at this thing. So we kind of need to address this thing.
Do you, can I, do you think you could get the signatures from the town to create?
But then we probably could.
I'd, I'd like to see it. I, I'd like to see if the town is actually, if we could get enough people to show that they were actually interested in this charter study.
But if we did the signatures, understand that the initiative for random is the 10% of signature.
Right.
So we would actually, the 10% of the people that signed would be the ones who create the ordinance and present it or promote it. I, you know, I, I think if it has to go that way, I'm sure we probably could get it. With the last, yeah, what was the last election? Obviously, people, people love it. All these people love it, I mean, it's not a change number here in town. There's enough people, I think, we're gonna go around and get a petition signed. But I still think it's, it should, I'm sorry. I still think it should really come from the council. The council should create this, this ordinance and put it out there, vote on it, let the charter permission be created. At the end of the day, the only thing a charter permission does is recommend whether a change should come. And the people in town then vote on what change they want. They may say that, you know, this former government is the best and they're not done changing. The only way to find that out goes to put a charter permission study together. And I think it's really, I really believe that. And I really, you know, I'm hoping you guys will take some advisement because in two, in two weeks they get it voted. But you're talking about May and June already to get it resolved. In 20 days, you passed that before anything happened with it. So you're, you're heading to July and then all of a sudden the window's closed. I would say, think about this.
It's, it's, it's been a topic of discussion, so it's something that we're working through.
Timeline, no.
I, I understand.
You use that in a timeline, if you have to start looking at it.
Right.
Otherwise, the two years hence. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor President, if I can see some questions are in my, so I can read it so everybody knows that from the contract that will be in East Brunswick Animal Hospital. It says that fees for the services provided by East Brunswick Animal Hospital shall be as follows. Spaying a female cat shall be $150 per procedure and neutering a male cat shall be $100 per procedure. With the procedure shall include spaying or neutering, vaccination, ear tipping, and a microchip.
Thank you.
That's, that would be, that's in the contract. I did not notice that that was not provided with the.
Okay, I appreciate it, thank you very much.
That is what's gonna be sent to them, so I don't think we need to change anything. Let's get it for them and get it signed.
That's everything that Mr. Nago, that's everything really. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
Good evening, hello there. Ed Sealy, 88 Elm Street, Spotswood, New Jersey. I want to talk for a few seconds on what you just talked about. Did anybody else research this information for changing the form of government? So I might understand that to do this, the petition that people were gonna get is just to get a committee or is that to change the form of government?
Just for the.
The petition.
Just to get it on the ballot in No- in November is what we're looking at.
Well, I'm bothered there to be plenty of people going out and getting petitions signed. And the only reason I say this is because, um, some of the council members are still here and still behind me. Uh, and the circus has run a little different. We were pretty much running it that way. All the council had a decision and knew everything was going on long before they got up here and said, what? And if their decisions were better than mine, then that was spot is the way it should be. And that's the problem. I was never really for this change in government until recently. What I've seen happen now can happen again. That was again, we're headed down a really horrible road. Because there's really no getting together and no getting along whatsoever. And, uh, I think we should strongly move towards a different type of government. And I said I will help do that. That's enough on that subject. Does the mayor or the administration discuss with the council offers of employment or salaries before they come here for this basis?
Can you read that question?
Does the mayor or administration talk to you, the council, about employer employment changes such as new jobs and salaries before it gets to you guys here?
Not consistently, no.
A later benefit and positions added. And I get while the mayor now has the power to do so, so may we counsel. However, there still has to be a check and balance in this system. Okay, well, you know, okay, she has a right to hire an employee she wants to hire. She has a right to make an offer. But you guys have the right to say, hmm, that's a little too much money. We don't want to do that or we don't want that position. I believe before was brought up by an exception I got right off the bat, a simple one. What exactly does the assistant VA do? Does he do part of your workload because it's too heavy? Or does he do something else in a different area of the government?
He does various programs.
He doesn't, I'm sorry, what did you say? Translate.
So part of your job. And you're also, um, Director of Human Research, you're a researcher, right? You're charged with that as well. Why couldn't we put, if we're gonna put a position somewhere, why couldn't you put, just down to Mr. Shkervich, I believe, a former police agent, as a HR guy, so he can do his whole job whole. So you're creating more positions that I don't get. And I know why he came here to begin with because there was some stalemate between who was still in a position because he wasn't here yet and had to fill his spot. Same with right now, you just decided I'm gonna make it a temporary CFO. That doesn't have the certification. Well, CFO is the highest position up here. Definitely is because they're the ones who certify funds. Who's gonna give that person direction? They can't be the VA because it's a conflict.
They function under the Department of Finance. So that's the reason why there's a check back.
Thank you. So obviously, as Brandon mentioned before, the mission, this, the position could not be filled.
Um, well, we all know this, we don't even want to go down that road. I heard three years, but my administration was horrible. Yeah, they worked together for three years though. And we don't have it no more. And the reason, we all know why they're coming here, they, they work on the street, they don't want to work here. And I'm sad, but that's just the way it is. So when you're doing these salary ordinances, as well as buddy, I think the budget time you're gonna have is short because I, I heard Brandon say he sat down with all the department heads finally and discussed what was going on, and that was something I did in November. I didn't wait till, I'm a budgetary. Could be reasons, man's probably very busy because a lot going on. But we've seen a slowed down government, it's not as effective as it used to be. And pretty much there's three Ts involved. And that's transparency, uh, trust, and I won't say the last one, but we don't have any other. Right now in government, nobody trusts a government truth, it would be a third, the truth doesn't seem to be happening. Transparency, let curtains have more transparency. And I'm not blaming you, I'm just saying, you know, I hear arguments about we don't work together. It's kind of hard to work together when there's only one way. And hopefully it'll change soon, because if it doesn't, people like me and people, people in this audience, we're gonna get up on our own and go out there and get these signatures. And there's gotta be a change. And hopefully November is gonna be a big change. Thank you.
Thank you.
Evening, Rich Gold, we're at 35 South Street. Appreciate you guys coming out, you and, I don't know, still a lot to get done.
Yeah, I, I apologize, it's been a little epic for the last couple of months, but.
I understand that, but I'm just saying, I speak to Matt. He's supposed to get to hire his son, not to get his son. I mean, there's, I have a list of things that I've been putting in, I mean.
And, and, and I, I.
You wouldn't, you don't, you actually discriminate against the people on South Street. I go to church, but it is a Catholic church, I mean, is that, why is, I don't know. I'm just saying, there, there's so many, you know, problems over there because of that, Jim, that was built. If the town can't fix itself, that's not my fault, then why should I have to pay for that? You know?
I do, I, I, I do. Yeah, and I apologize for the delay and I, I promise you that we will, we will, uh, work to, to get this done.
I mean, it's been going on for years and years.
Oh, I understand.
I understand your point of view, but I'm just saying, there's guys that have jobs that don't do it. You have code enforcement and, and you want Steve giving you nothing and riding, I, I give him. Submit it to him. Just falls off like, like, like the other ones did. It's not gonna get falling off no more. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
You've been calling, I thought you were coming out first. Uh, last month when I was here, I asked if there was anybody in the administration that I think we could part of the case. Councilman Schwartz said that you guys weren't part of the administration, which is correct. So I decided that I was gonna do a little research and I was gonna do a little digging. This year is the Vicki Flynn Hour. So we're gonna go through everybody that's connected to everybody and how they're all connected. So up here we have Mayor Palmer and we have her husband, who hired a Hill Ward firm. How do I know that? Because I asked for a lawyer reference. I didn't get anything from the police department, which is the case for these guys. Hill Ward hired Victoria Flynn. Victoria Flynn works for the Assembly, Keport, Spotswood, Bradley Beach, and Seager as an attorney. I don't want your Seager. Yes, you do. Yeah, you do. See Bright? Okay, See Bright. I don't want your Seager. Okay, that's not Vicki, look at the board, okay? It's all connected, so, okay, can you stop? Are you gonna let me? Thank you. Tim Paul she does not work for, however, the law firm of DeCotis, Fitzpatrick, Cole, and Giblin was the town council municipal lawyers. So let's go through the list over here. So Victoria Flynn. Excuse me, can I interrupt? No, I'm not. DeCotis was not, I, I don't know if DeCotis was. They were. I, I did my research on most of the people. So anyway, Seager, we have Eric Burnsey and Abby March, who are special counsel, special investigative counsel on this year's agendas with Vicki Flynn. Burnsey and March are also personal attorneys to the mayor, involved in the two current lawsuits, the lawsuit against the council and the lawsuit with the, with the body worn account. Michael March is the mayor of Bridgewater. Bridgewater hired Natasha Church while Michael March was manager. Natasha Church in charge for Spotswood. Now, let's go over here. Bradley Beach, he is Kim Humphrey. She was the VA who's now currently suing Bradley Beach. She wants to be the QPA here, we've known we've gone through that twice. And she's currently the VA in Keport, where again, Vicki Flynn is the attorney. Now we go to Spotswood, we've got Kim Humphries, we've got Brandon Elba. Oh, Brandon Elba, part of the assembly. Oh, I'm sorry, you need to make it this time around, was part of the assembly. Who also is next? Brandon Elba is like Dana, worked for Parker McKee. Now, I know I asked them at the last meeting if there was anybody in the administration that had any ties to Parker McKee. Nobody answered at the time. I did not say that, I said she worked for, worked for. Here, no. That's what I'm saying. Other than your employees, it speaks to me everywhere, can't have employees. He's a government official, I can speak to him any, any way I want. Yeah, no, unfortunately it is too late.
Oh, they're just impressed me.
With the assembly. We now have Louis McRinon, who's also a special counsel attorney here in the town, who's part of the Conklin law firm. Conklin is the speaker of the Senate. So all of this, this entire thing here, now let's go back just a little bit here because now I want to go back to Tim Falls. So Tim Falls had bad attorneys that Vicki worked for. He's hired John Scannan and he's going over his confidential secretaries. We also have Victoria Flynn, who worked with one of the people from Schwartz and Happy. He's also a special attorney. So we've got this entire incestuous relationship. By the way, if anybody in the audience that hasn't seen this, if you draw the line, everybody is connected to Victoria Flynn. So this is the Vicki Flynn Hour, which means the mayor can't do her job. Which means the mayor, he might get people to come and work for her. He's gonna be hiring political hats who are all friends of Vicki Flynn. Now, Vicki Flynn worked for Hill Wallop, Parker McKee was Elba. We've got King March, which is the one that's for the mayor, and over here at Seager, or See Bright, excuse me. Then we've got Reyna and Conklin, part of the whole Assembly/Senate thing. Then we've got this DeCotis, Patrick Cole, and Giblin, which is the whole Tim Falls thing. And then we've got Happy Schwartz, who's your friends, Vicki Flynn. There you have it. So can we continue hiring more Vicki's friends? Because I don't think we have enough here. By the way, anybody else? There it is.
Diane Charlesworth, 29 Old Stateroe. Um, what I'm about to say is not personal, it's politics. Okay? About 16 months ago, there was a newly constructed constituted, um, council, took office with three new members. A big sentiment among the voters was the need to get some new people in there to be able to get things done. Most of us here in the cheap seats, as technology likes to call them, had a big sense of optimism. Some of us, like me, may have been a victory either. So we sat back and we've been waiting and watching and waiting for action. Here we are, 16 months later. Have you had time to get settled yet? Because it is, is extremely clear to us and everyone in this state that there is way more chaos going on now than there was 16 months ago. Regrettably, I need to say that you haven't lived up to your expectations. Council President, you know I have a great deal of respect for you, I consider you a friend. But please, you have to do something. I'm asking for a reason why this council has done nothing to stop the chaos created by the mayor under the guidance and quite frankly, the direction of attorney Victoria Flynn and VA Elba. You're aware that under the law, you have the authority to vote on whether or not to keep the VA. I'd ask you why you have to take in that vote, but I know that it's illegal without a rice notice. So we'll forego that at this point. Councilman Kramer and Councilman Lesko were on board when the whole fire truck situation went down. Did they bother to investigate whether or not that was a legitimate transaction that we would give for a dollar, which we're not even sure that we have ever received a valuable piece of equipment to a multimillion dollar private for-profit corporation?
Billion dollars.
Former mayor Ed Sealy pointed out that BA Elba was aware of the council's intentions to hire their own attorney. He acknowledged that it was absolutely his responsibility to certify funds as directed by the council. But he didn't use it. Not only did he not do it, but he kept that completely quiet during the caucus meeting. When it was brought up, he was silent again during the regular meeting. When it was brought up, he was silent again during the regular meeting. He was a vote and only raised the issue that he created after the vote as an attempt to discredit the council president and council members.
Council President, I think the judge put out an order today, which clearly states the actions that I did prior to.
You have to interrupt.
That's not what, that's not what the order said. I have a copy of it on my computer. I've read it completely. And you know what the, the one wrong word is on the resolution?
Intervene.
That was a violation of the Open Public Meeting Act.
Intervene.
It was a violation of the Open Public Meeting Act. It was the email stated that council had already decided to do the work, but hired the first.
Yes.
That's a violation of the Open Public Meeting Act. It was probably a point out as an advocate for the Open Public Meeting Act, that you cannot make a decision outside of a publicly advertised meeting. I gave advice to council, which is my responsibility as VA.
And you sat here mum and let them hang themselves.
No, you have to know.
I stated to the council that they should not have it on the agenda. I don't set the agenda. I do not set the agenda. The council does.
You can just address me.
Okay, we try. We really do try, Nick.
You can do the fight for us. We're sitting out here watching this hot mess. I'm not gonna curse. I promise I won't curse. Um, and, and, and we don't get the feeling that anything's being done to stop it. Public reads the news. The public sees the lawsuits. The public sees the arrogance that the Palmer administration has. And I wanna be crystal clear that the public also sees that Councilman Lesko is a puppet to this administration. And the rest of the council is unwilling or scared to do what they are legally committed to do and morally should have do. We need answers, but more importantly, we need the action. We're watching and we're still waiting.
Thank you.
I disagree with your assessment, Ms. Charlesworth. I'm not gonna respond to you further.
Okay.
Has a full-time bus driver for the Office on Aging been hired? Has anyone applied?
One individual has.
And Chris Larry is, as she pointed out, leaving in a month. Will someone be in place by the time he leaves? I, I did my own research, uh, to see where the job was actually posted. Um, I still can't find it.
Yeah.
I, um, when you do a general Google search for it, it should pop up in wherever it might be. Um, the only place it showed up was the League of Municipalities, but then you click on the link and it's a dead link. Um.
So, Brandon, can we advertise it in the local papers or wherever we can try and get maybe somebody that's not looking on the League of Municipalities for this position?
Even if they were, you'd not see it.
Well, it only, you only pay us the other term. So that's if you wanna have it up on the League of Municipalities for longer than that.
Why don't you just put on?
Can we put it, but can we put it in other, uh, publications? Maybe, maybe people that are bus drivers don't look into municipalities, but in a bus driver position.
They were looking on our website.
I'm sorry? Specifically, this school always goes there. That's where you look for a job, just like NJ School Jobs is where you look for a student.
I, I understand, but we're seeing that we're not getting any traction from that. So is there another option? And we put it in.
We're going to focus on websites.
Try and, try and, and, and we advertise it in other places.
Are people going to apply? We have people put other jobs in. They're going as well.
And that's to my second point. Um, Larry is currently making $16.78 per hour. Minimum wage is $15. The salary range that you actually have a chance to, you could have updated tonight, like you did with recreation for God knows why, and I really am disappointed that you approved it.
Just the first week.
Um. It is up to 40K right now, part of full-time driver. Which means that if they get a paid lunch, the most they can make is $19.23 an hour. Or without a paid lunch, it would be around $22 an hour. Bus drivers that are at a premium, and you are not going to get someone. Now, this is a full-time job. It's not with benefits, so it's not, it's hard enough to find a part-timer. You know, full-timers, it's a little bit easier, and I'm sure my people might be interested if it were a competitive salary. And if you could find it. I mean, honestly, I go to websites. I would go, that's where I would go. I did that Google search today, and East Brunswick has been looking for a part-time driver. It was on their website. It was on Indeed.com. It was on the League of Municipalities. There was a bunch of different places it was. I'm disappointed because this, I don't know if you understand, and you probably don't, how important transportation is to the seniors.
Sure.
There, there's two pressing issues for seniors in New Jersey. One is housing. We're not fixing that. And another is transportation. That's, that's another one. We are not a commuter state. We need, and Spotswood has been fortunate enough to have their own bus to take seniors to not just within Spotswood, but to the doctors in, in the local area. That has been a godsend, because I can tell you, I've worked with seniors in other towns who don't have that, and they're reliant on MPAT and Access Link. And it is not easy at all. So, I, I cannot implore you enough to make a more concerted effort to find someone. Yes, it's true, it's hard to find people to work in municipal government, period. But you gotta at least give it a try.
That's what got me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kristen Carase, 203 Willard Clark Circle. Um, I would just like to first thank, uh, uh, President Legakis, uh, Councilwoman Zorni and Councilwoman Schwartz for responding to my email. I had sent an email to the entire uh, council regarding the flooding onto, on the Willard Clark Circle. We had, as you know, a humongous storm first week of April. Copious amounts of rain, inches. We got nothing to base this. I would just like to thank Engineering Department, the DPW for all of their work so far. And I'm here to remind and ask for the council to consider, um, maintenance equipment for the department. Um, I shared with you all the pictures that John from DPW showed of the work they did. Unbelievable excavation of silt and everything in the drainage ditches. Amazing. Um, I, I can't imagine how many years that's been there. I don't even want to know. So, going forward, we need to maintain that. It can't just be, oh, it's the 20-year mark, let's clear that out. Um, and we, we may not need to purchase something like that, but maybe in the budget or in their, in whatever, they could rent that piece of equipment once a year or something like that. Um, because it made a tremendous, it's hopefully made a tremendous difference. Um, next is, um, behind the bend, uh, we walked on between 191 and 185 Willard Clark, where we get that river that we have not gotten. Um, could I ask Engineer Cullen, um, have we done anything right in that drainage area right there behind Willard Clark Circle?
Uh, the area that, that follows Willard Clark Circle all the way around?
Right.
Yes, uh, so John and DPW went back there. They cleaned out various kinds of debris they found, and it's cleared right now. So cleared the whole thing out.
Okay, great. So again, as you explained, the best time to do that is in the fall, winter, after all the reason ideas die back and everything, completely understandable.
Sure, yes.
Um, so I guess the next step I'd wanna ask, in addition to getting this on the regular maintenance schedule, is now we need to address East Brunswick. So if you've never returned your call or email, emails or reached out, that whole line of houses that border that drainage ditch, use that drainage ditch as a dumping ground for leaves, brass clippings, things like that. There is not a water flow, not a river. There's not a water flow there that will clear that out if people dump in there. Um, and I know with East Brunswick, it's on Spotswood, but they're impacting us. So I don't know what the step is, but, um, I think there is a next step with council, because unfortunately, our engineering department's not getting an answer from East Brunswick, to somehow talk to those, and again, I don't know what the procedures are, that's a bigger job. Um, to talk to those families that are there to not dump in Spotswood, because that's a future and ongoing problem. So bottom line, thank you very much for everything that you've done so far. We really appreciate it. I know it's a little version from what's been up here tonight. Um, and, um, you know, going forward to keep the maintenance continued, and, uh, we appreciate that you're back to season.
Uh, yes, I didn't want to interrupt you. Uh, so I actually met, I spoke with the council president about this, and, uh, once this work was which it now is, we've been ongoing, and we were gonna send letters to all those homes along the way just to kind of inform them, hey, you know, you've done all this work, we, you know, just to let them understand the situation, so.
That is fantastic. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. I'm sorry, can I ask the letters that you're talking about sending, are they Spotswood residents only, or are you?
Yeah, we would address both sides, um, Spotswood, Willard Clark, and Millan, which is East Brunswick.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you for keeping us updated on the decisions and the fact that there was no flooding for two years.
Yes.
I have a comment before the next resident. Um, I'm not one to really care about the recognition, but I have replied to, to Mrs. Carase's email, and I only mentioned it because my character was just submerged like five minutes ago. And I went out there to the Willard Clark area with DPW and the engineers, and they did a fine job explaining to me the issue, how the water's flowing over there, what can be done, what we need. And the letters is a good idea to let people know and to remember not to dump anything in there.
Uh, my name's Steve. Uh, so what was the outcome of the investigation with the fire truck? Did we ever hear back from DCA?
No.
So we had sent information to DCA and asked them to, to investigate. Um, though we investigated.
We did.
There wasn't investigation done. So what was the outcome of our investigation?
Finding of any violation of the ethics laws.
We sold the fire truck to a non-government agency for a dollar, and that's not a criminal act?
But remember, it was her friend that investigated it.
So at that point, after the investigation was done, we then sent the information to DCA to have them But again, isn't it a criminal matter? I'm not. How is it not? We, we sold a, a
It's not.
piece of equipment that's public to a non-government agency that is for profit for a dollar. And then her husband became fired right after that.
So the borough attorney told us that it's not a criminal matter. We then, as I mentioned, after the investigation was done, sent the information to DCA to have them do an investigation as well.
How would the police investigate? Because as far as I know, she's not a police officer. All right, so, uh, why is Spotswood still suing the Mama Ca- uh, Middlesex County Prosecutor's Office uh, for the bodyguard video camera footage not to be released? And will you drop the lawsuit?
I, I have absolutely nothing to do with that.
No, the Spotswood Borough was suing the prosecutor's office.
I can answer that, Council President. Go right ahead. Spotswood, Spotswood did not authorize the lawsuit. Authorization on the lawsuit was done by the insurance company. The insurance company assigned, they have insurance. They're not being gave by the borough, they're being gave by the insurance company because a lawsuit had come out about the bodyguard account. And in order to defend the borough, they also need to, to defend that suit. And that is why the insurance company brought suit against the Middlesex County prosecutor.
That's not what the lawsuit says, it says it says the borough.
Yeah.
Doesn't say the
The borough is represented by the insurance company.
So the borough can stop the lawsuit. Will you guys drop it?
Borough has an obligation to cooperate with the legal defense that has been developed by the insurance company, every municipality, everyone who has, even the person who has um, insurance with their, for their car insurance. You have an obligation to cooperate with your insurance company, and they're the ones that dictate how things are litigated. So in furtherance of their duty to defend and identify this borough, they made, made a decision to file a lawsuit.
But they didn't file it. We did. But the borough, the non-insurance company.
That filed the suit. The borough does not, as the homeowners have tried, threw up requests to get the, the bills. There is no bills for Hatfield Insurance because they were hired by the gym.
But again, Spotswood Borough is suing the Middlesex County Prosecutor's Office. Will you drop the suit? Doesn't matter who's paying. Doesn't matter, it's, it's the insurance company that fit and fill. We're suing the Middlesex County Prosecutor's Office to stop the racist tirade that was caught on video camera. Will you stop it?
We just, we have absolutely nothing that we can do about it.
Spotswood suing. Not, Spotswood Borough is, is named as the person that's suing, or as the entity that's suing. Not the insurance company, Borough Spotswood.
We did not authorize it. This council did not authorize it.
Okay, so we draw the lawsuit down. Just withdraw it, saying we don't want anymore. Because that's on for May 10. So wanted to draw them. So you're trying to hide the video from coming out. Because I've been at the court for a year, and I was always told, oh, you know so much about this video, but then when my request would come back, we have no idea what video you're talking about. So I opened requested from the prosecutor's office, and all of a sudden, she knew exactly what we were talking about, and then you guys stopped. You guys sued to stop the release of it. That's how it came about. Spotswood Borough suing, not the, not the insurance company. Spotswood Borough is suing. Um, are we under Robert's rules of order here?
Yes.
So about three times today, I have didn't orders, and you just ignore them.
I'm sorry, what are you referring to?
So I did a point of order. I did a point of privilege, and it was ignored.
I didn't even hear you.
So next time, I'm gonna stand up and scream. I mean, are, are you trained in Robert's Rules of Order?
I did not hear you say anything.
Okay, are you trained in Robert's Rules of Order?
Am I trained in it? I wouldn't say I'm an expert, no.
So you know point of privilege, you know
Yeah, but I did not hear you say anything. I apologize.
Um, so my previous open request, I still haven't gotten my email logs of his emails and the mayor's. When am I getting those?
So when you put in an open request, Jenny sends the information to the borough attorney to review.
Why she's wanting to vote for it? Not the attorney, it's the administration.
Because there's certain things that need, that need to be rejected before they're served out.
He's not licensed yet.
So when am I gonna get the email logs?
Can we get the information out to Mr. Rump?
Um, Council President, we, as you know, you're copied on everything. You see the back and forth. Um, re- the review of email logs for reductions, it takes a long time because it is a broad and overbroad, it's actually an overbroad request, but we are undertaking the, um, the review. Um, I spent hours on it recently and gave Jenny a guide to help her maybe wrap it up, and then I'll do the final review. Um, but I do believe myself and the clerk are working diligently on everything that's coming in. And when she, when it's complete, it will be sent out.
Okay, so it was ignored, so that's a denial. There's no extension request. Pat versus Galley Councilship says it's not overbroad. Um. Pat versus Gately, township says not overbroad, um.
The law says that if, if it causes substantial disruption to.
Mr. Ron, when I see your open request come in, I, and, and. And it's been months for that request. I, I'm not in the office every day to see. I see you are. To see what the timeline is on these things. And as I, as I've said before, the process that we have gone through, uh, when you send an open request, Jenny will put it together, send it to the attorney to review before it is then sent to you. And it goes to the black hole. So the ones you don't want to answer, just get ignored. So you'll, you'll request, let's say in three. Mr. Ron, no, I cannot, I, I cannot say why it takes that long or. It just gets ignored.
I can say, I can say for your council president that Jenny does like almost drop things to get things done for Mr. Ron.
It's not, it's not her issue. It's you that it goes to the black hole. You're the black hole. It just ignores us. Just get ignored.
Thank you, Mr. Ronco. And so every effort's done to be as responsive as we can, if, if only to avoid this Q and A, because I do think, um, it's unfair to put that type of burden on Jenny all the time.
No, it's you. It's not Jenny. It's you.
While she's trying to, um, do her other work as well.
But, but according, wait, according to you guys, she gets it, it gets sent to her. So then it goes to the black hole and what, maybe it'll get sent to me, maybe it won't. I mean, what are we doing? What would you like me to do with that? I want the, I want the request. I, I understand. I don't, I don't. What are you guys hiding? Big video footage, email logs. What are you hiding? The fire truck? What are you hiding? And not hiding hands? I can't wait for somebody to go out and hand claps.
I'm Rich O'Brien of Levin Hudson Avenue on a completely different topic. Completely different. Are we doing Spark and Park this year?
I have not heard.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Yes, it is scheduled for Friday, July 5th. I apologize.
And it's in Spotswood this time?
It's, it's Friday night, July 5th. Yeah, I'm sorry.
We're thinking introducing matches and explosives in Spotswood is a good idea, right? I'm July 5th.
Friday, July, Friday, July 5th. I just wanna make a comment here. I send in open requests all the time. I know they go to Jenny. I call Jenny up on the phone and I say, or hey, I sent you this open request last Monday. It's two weeks later. I've gotten nothing. I get no question of an extension. I don't get asked for an extension. The open request doesn't come to me. I get nothing. Now, I know, speaking to Jenny, having worked with Jenny, I've known Jenny for well over a year now, respect her highly. I know damn well it's not Jenny. Okay, I know damn well it's not Jenny. So let's stop throwing Jenny under the bus. It's not Jenny. Okay? We all know who it is. We all know what the situation is. And we all know that it's Vicky. And we also know now that Vicky also has her name on the Oprah bill to get rid of Oprah, because Vicky doesn't want to be transparent. She wants what the bill says. Oh, that's exactly what the bill says. I sat at the hearings, all of them, and I testified. Don't tell me what the bill says. Just interrupt me. Okay, Vicky, done? Stop. Oh, make sure you send the police up to my house. Okay, say please to my house again. So I mean, you know, but, but here's the problem. We tried to address you and then we get these two that constantly have to interfere. My whole point is, is that it's not Jenny. It's also not Jenny sending back the Oprah denials. Because I've been telling you for a hundred percent that Jenny doesn't have the legalese language that are in those open requests. They're coming from Vicky. So if they're coming from Vicky, like Vicky put her name on them as opposed to throwing Jenny under the bus every time. Okay, I think that's pretty fair. If she's gonna deny the Oprah request for whatever legal BS reason she comes up with, stop making her put Jenny's name on the frigging request, on the denier. And as far as, uh, you know, Jenny's job is also to do Oprah. I understand that a settling woman, Flynn, doesn't like Oprah, but that's too bad. That's part of Jenny's job. And we also have Anthony. So there's absolutely no reason why we cannot get an Oprah request for one piece of paper done in a reasonable amount of time. Or at least say, okay, I need a ten-day extension, but we're not getting ten days. We want a ten-day extension, then we want a twenty-day extension, then we want a two-month extension, then we can't do it. Oh, we're overburdened. Maybe you're all hurt because you've got lots of crap going on in this town. I mean, maybe that's the reason why there's eight thousand Oprah requests. Just like there is in all the other towns that Vicky's in. So I only want the truth.
Tim, anybody online?
Ed Cilly, eight, eight on Street Spotswood, New Jersey. Just, uh, a direction for you and for some people in your audience, okay? Uh, I don't know who you're talking to, Miss Flynn, but I caution you on the answers that you give about DCA because I happen to know for a fact that DCA, not the organization that investigates that, and it is in the hands of a organization that does investigate that and has been three weeks now.
The local Government Ethics Law, Ethics Commission that works under DCA?
Who knows? Somebody else?
Oh, I don't know. All I know is about DCA.
I'm just saying that the DCA sent this person back a letter saying, ah, no, we don't do this. You can go to this department. I don't know why you haven't heard back from them, but I ask.
Thank you.
All right.
Make it.
Nice try.
Easy swim, but all night long to round ball. That dinner is over. Can we get the water fountain if they turn it back on? We have to get a drink before this drive.
I don't see why not. Take a motion to close the public.
All in favor?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.